It is ten after ten and there are two council presidents, two council members present, the usual two, Ms. Miskowski and myself, with eight more of the twelve who are expected today, we could actually start this meeting. That begins at ten o'clock. All right, it's ten sixteen and now we have five council members, half of a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Chick, Mr. Fuhrer, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Sivornich, Ms. Walters, Ms. Wax is excused, nobody else has an excuse. We always need you to be there. Okay, we're up to six. Eight. Had that happened, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you're right. Ms. Chick, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Sivornich, Ms. Walters. Any two will do. We await one of the following, Ms. Chick, Mr. Sivornich, Ms. Walters. Next one in the room, we can start the meeting. Chick is here, we're ready. If I can ask the people who are actually on the meeting side of this to sit down or lay their weight. All right, good morning, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Can you guys sort it out over here? Thank you. Well, now it's a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, April fourth. There are fifteen council districts, the council meets on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, we still claim, at ten o'clock. Yeah, sometimes we meet at ten o'clock, not lately, though. This is true, Hal, just hold on. We are being viewed on channel thirty-five, we are available by council phone, and we are ready to begin the meeting. Call the roll, please.
Burnson, Chick, Fuhrer, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Brule, Thomas, Sivornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, thank you, first order.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those two. Has anyone ever objected to a resolution? All right, never mind, go ahead.
Before beginning the irregular agenda, there's a request on item number six to receive and file that item in as much as the assessment has been paid.
All right, if there is no objection, item six is received and filed.
On the regular agenda, item number nine is confirmation of Janet Fitch to the Board of Library Commissioners for the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and four.
All right, before we do, Ms. Fitch, come on up, but before we do that, Chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for an introduction.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I have a newly elected member of the city of Esteli in Nicaragua who is president, he is the vice mayor, is visiting Los Angeles and San Francisco initiating discussions for sister cities relationships, and I'd like to introduce to everybody, El Ingeniero, the engineer, Pedro Pablo Calderon, and he's the vice mayor of Esteli, Nicaragua. And I just wanted to, I was in Esteli back in nineteen ninety, and there was this mural that was extremely impressive, it was a mural dedicated to the martyrs of the war, and it was painted by an Angelino. And I saw that same work in Los Angeles, and again, I was recognizing that when we were having previous discussions, so thank you for allowing me to introduce him to everybody.
My pleasure, welcome to the, to Los Angeles. See, we do have the best public art and public artists. All right, now, Ms. Fitch, you're on, now you don't have to say anything yet, hold on. This is item...
Item number nine.
Okay, item number nine, members of the council. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, that's approved, see how easy that was? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Fourth with on that, yes. Okay, next item.
Item number ten is confirmation of David Michelson to the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners for the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and three.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Hi. My, my questions have to do in significant part with the spectacle to which the city's been treated for a long time over the Greek Theater project. It's been horrible and ridiculous, and the commission has been no help on this issue. We have a bidder who should be awarded the contract because it's the best bid, but the commission won't do anything about it. What has been your thinking on this issue? Have you had a chance to evaluate it? What, if anything, has been said to you about it in the course of getting to this stage? Those are the questions I'd like to have answers to.
Certainly, thank you, Councilman. It is a big issue, it's almost difficult to know where to start, maybe go from reverse. Very few people have actually approached me and asked my thoughts concerning the Greek Theater.
Hold on one second, it's very... Come here a little bit quieter, please, thanks, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman, very few people have actually approached me and inquired as to my thoughts or my opinion concerning the Greek Theater. And I do have thoughts and I do have opinions concerning that, the Greek Theater is obviously very important, both local and regional facility, it's a gem of the city of Los Angeles, and we have to have a good concessionaire in place in order to ensure that appropriate revenues come in to the city and that good performances and productions, and also that the needs of the immediate residential community are also met. What I know about what's occurred today concerning the Greek Theater is frankly what I've heard on the television, what I've seen in the newspaper, what I hear others sometimes speak about, I personally not had the opportunity to review the original RFP that was prepared by the city, nor have I reviewed the two proposals that came in from the two proposers. I am very much looking forward to, however, engaging on this issue of the Greek Theater. It's my understanding that the commission has already made a decision to, I guess on a three-to-one vote, to cancel the original RFP and to go back out.
Although I may, I must say that I think that that decision was based in significant part on the fact that there were only four commissioners, and there had been a two-to-two deadlock with Mr. Soborov's recusal from that process, and out of, I think, frustration over the complete inaction that two-to-two had caused, there was a move to alter that approach. If there were five commissioners, the approach might well be rescinded. And I have to say, you know, I'm not a fan of litmus tests for people going through a confirmation process, because today's controversial issue will fade, and then we're really looking for someone who can exercise good judgment on an array of issues. But there's been so much controversy and so much poor judgment over this issue, that I think it's really important to be able to get a sense from you how in, how you would handle this specific case and how in general you would deal with the competition for requests for proposals when the facts are clear.
Right, I can assure you that should the commission's decision be reconsidered, or if it's not reconsidered, when proposals come in with respect to the new RFP, I will absolutely have rolled up my sleeves even before the proposals come in, and played, I think, an active role with the department in the crafting of the new RFP, assuming that's the course of action that stayed, and then reviewing very carefully proposals that come in, talking to the stakeholders involved, and coming up with, from my perspective, as a vote on that commission, the correct vote to have the appropriate concessionaire awarded the contract.
Would you move, would you move to reconsider the item so that five commissioners, a full body, could actually make a decision?
To be honest with you, I don't know whether, whether legally the commission has that ability available to it, that's something that certainly can be looked into.
If it were?
If it were. Councilman, unfortunately, because I'm not yet on the commission, I don't have sort of the full array of information presented to me or available to me to even know, you know, with the present status, whether my vote would be such that the appropriate course of action would be to bring back the, the original underlying vote, underlying vote on the original RFP, or to stay the course, which is revising the RFP in certain respects and going back out into the marketplace, so to speak, and allowing people to propose again. I'm sure there's pros and cons to both courses of action, and as I sit here today, I cannot honestly tell you which I would support, because I don't have that information yet available to me, but I think you raise excellent questions, and these are questions that I will get answers for, for myself and for others.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I think it was, and this is a quote I've shared many times, but it was Mrs. Sterling who was the founder of Overe Street converted that alley into a tourist site that used to say that it's always going to be the politics of man that corrupt the principles of man. And part of what I think is going on here is we're trying to get a fair process established and a clear understanding of the facts. That's what I think this issue is on concessions, and it's been hard to grasp, it's been hard to grasp because all sides come at you with their perspective, and then that's this particular issue that some of my colleagues have talked about, I think it's been one of the more complicated ones. In many instances, we've deferred to the council member of the district only because of their track record in trying to serve their constituencies, and in other instances, we thought the issues that evolved were important enough that the full council should participate in that decision-making. The reason I'm basically going to be voting for you today is your track record, the fact that you're, basically, the principal deputy county counsel, I think you understand that role, and that you moved your way up the ranks to get there, that wouldn't have happened if you were playing one side over the other, from my perspective. I won't hold against you the fact that you were deputy mayor for Mayor Warden, and you advised him with his transportation issues from ninety-four to ninety-five, and the fact that you, just like I won't hold against you, the fact that you worked for county supervisor Ed Edelman as an advisor on policies. I think you have a very impressive background, and couldn't establish that background if you were basically biased in a lot of your decision-making, and so, from my perspective, I just wanted to give you the realm of the difficulty, because I think that the concessions, in terms of all concessions, that recreation and parks, has been an issue that's been facing this council since I first came on it, whether it was a golf concession, basically, an entertainment area, and now we're dealing with the Greek Theater. I do believe the Greek Theater is an important asset of the cities, and I understand why the council would like to be part of that decision, but the process requires that the commission sends something to us first. And so, again, I appreciated your answers, and I'll be supporting your...
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate your support, and I will bring to this... Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate your support, and I will bring to this process, I guarantee it, an open mind and a desire to have a fair level playing field for all to compete on, so the city can get the best concessionaire in place, not just on the Greek, but as you so well point out, and really all the contracts that the Rec and Parks Department's involved in.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak, but I think I had to rise, because I think what I heard earlier was inappropriate, in trying to grill somebody on an issue that, in order for them to be confirmed. Now, I have known this individual for a number of years, I've always known him to be, have integrity, to be somebody that was fair in dealing with whatever he was involved with. And I think it was inappropriate, I don't want to chastise my colleague, but I think that we shouldn't be doing things like that. I would just hope that, and I certainly am going to vote to confirm you, but I would just hope that when you take into account, whether it's the Greek Theater or any other venue that comes up, that money is not always the bottom line. What is important, we have traditions in Los Angeles, we have neighborhoods that are affected by various things, we have a number of things. And what I heard earlier, and I tried to stay out of the discussions prior on this thing for various reasons, but I'm not going to stay out of them forever, I can tell you that, so everybody can understand that when the appropriate time comes to vote, I will vote on what I think is best, and I hope that you will do the same and weigh all of the particular facets of any particular contract that is going to be awarded to include everything, not just the quality of the operation, the tradition, the neighborhood, and the dollars, of course. But dollars are not always what things should be awarded on, they should be awarded on what is the best offer. And the best offer isn't always the dollar offer. And you should not be intimidated by or forced in anything, you're going to have to make decisions based upon your own conscience. And my vote is for you as an individual, as I know you, I don't know how you're going to go on that issue or any other issue, but I have confidence that you will carry out the duties at which we are confirming you for. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilman, thank you. And I also agree with you that there's many issues that properly need to be considered in any RFP. Price is a very important consideration, but there's also other very significant issues that need to be brought in.
Mr. Michelson, I don't think he asked you a question.
Oh, thank you.
Just hang on. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I would like to have us hold this on the desk, if at all possible, and return to this item after a few conversations have taken place.
So, what do you envision? Half an hour?
Presumably, I mean, you'll work through the agenda, and we'll have an opportunity to indicate to you what our readiness is.
All right, so, members of the, members of the council, where is everybody? Mr. Ridley Thomas, I believe, wants to find out some more information. Well, I don't know if he wants to find it out from Mr. Michelson or somebody else. Hold on, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that question in a minute then, Mark, Mr. Holden.
Well, I just think that Mr. Michelson, useful work, you're kind of council, right? You have a duty and responsibilities to kind of Los Angeles, the people's kind, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you going to be hanging around here until we finish, council? Yes or no, or maybe you can satisfy Mr.?
We can't ask him to hang around till the bidder ends, that's not fair.
That's right. So, what I'm saying, what I'm about to suggest then, is that you guys have a sidebar, and right now, and of course, we can proceed with the agenda and come back and resolve this matter.
That's essentially what I'm requesting.
Aye, aye, sir. Do that.
Thank you.
All right, is everybody comfortable with that? We're just going to hold this, and with any luck, we'll be back to it fairly quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, item 10 is on the desk, and we move to the next item.
Item number 24 is also a confirmation.
All right. Are we ready to... Jump numbers, that's what happened. Okay, this is item 24. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. It's with great pleasure that I recommended the council that we unanimously confirm our friend Rick Mayer to this important post in the city, the Community Forest Advisory Committee. Mr. Mayer has extensive professional and community background on just the issues we're talking about here, both in his work as a licensed landscape architect, but even as importantly, I think, in many neighborhoods around the city, trying to bring his efforts to bear to beautify our communities, especially when it comes to the landscape of them. He's a great guy on many levels, and colleagues, we're fortunate to have him being willing to serve in this capacity. I urge unanimous support.
Anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, that's approved, you're confirmed. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and forthwith on that. Okay, next item.
Items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is confirmation of assessment, Hollywood and Vine Sidewalk Maintenance District.
All right, I don't have any cards on that, is there anybody wishing to be heard on item one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. These are items one through... Well, we have a card on eight, so let's call that one special.
One through seven with the exception of six?
Yeah, let me just see if there are any specials. Members of the council, any specials, one through seven? No? Okay, open the roll on items one through five and seven. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Shall we do, do item eight and get that out of the way here? All right, on item eight, Mr. William Evans has asked to be heard. That one, Mr. Evans.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the council.
You can pull the mic up so you're more comfortable.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the council. I am here on behalf of the State of Casilda Trujillo. I've had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Andy Harris of the Building Department. I would commend her for her cooperation in this matter. This is a matter involving Councilman Zvonich's district, and she indicated that the matter may be the subject of a continuance or be deferred briefly, so I might talk to either him or his deputy in hopes of a resolution of same.
All right, whose district is this in?
Councilperson Zvonich.
Mr. Zvonich, did I hear you say one week continuance? All right, we'll continue that for one week.
Thank you very much.
That was easy.
Thank you.
At least this time.
I would like to also, on the record, thank Ms. Harris for her assistance.
Yes, we appreciate that, and I'm sure she will too. All right, item eight is continued for one week. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 23. Item 11 has two reports on, on the agenda.
All right, I need a motion on item 11. All right, Ms. McCow, she moves budget and finance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did we approve item 18, or is that before?
No, no, we're not up to that yet, hold on. We're, we're in that now. You want to call it special?
I want to call it special.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez calls item 18 special. Nine through 23, any other specials?
Madam President?
Yeah.
Madam President? Two things. First, if I could move the budget and finance report on item 11, please.
That was already done, Cindy did that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was in the back. Cindy does a good job with that.
Yes, she does.
And, and could we just hold item 20 on the desk for a moment, please?
Uh, yes. Okay, hold item 20 on the desk. Any other specials? 11 through, 11 is budget and finance, through 17 and 19 through 23. Okay, open the roll, except for 20. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 25 through 41.
All right, I do not have any cards, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on items 20, sorry, 24 through 41? 24 through 41? Okay, the public, I'm not up to that yet, hold on, I'll get you in a second. All right, the public hearings on those items are now closed, and...
29, Ms. Ridley Thomas wants to call 29 special.
All right, well, we're just starting on the specials. Okay, Ms. Chick calls 37 special, Mr. Ridley Thomas called 29 special. Anybody else? Mr. Padilla calls 31 special. Anybody else? Ms. Walters calls 28 special. Who said that? Alex, okay. Mr. Padilla calls item 40 special. Don't feel obligated, go ahead. 32? All right, Ms. Walters calls 32 special. All right, what's left on the table, unless I hear any more specials? There's items 25, 26, 27, 30, 33, 34, 35, 36, 38, 39, and 41. Are we ready? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Fourth with on 11. You're welcome. Next, they're still talking, okay. Next item.
Next item, the two, the close session items...
Yeah, we better hold those on the desk.
On the continued agenda, item 43.
Okay, item 43. Anybody wish to be heard on item 43? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that. Next one. Item 44 is closed.
Going back on the agenda, item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, item 18.
Yes, I need Mr. Deaton up here.
Good luck. He's on his way.
Okay, so maybe we should...
We just hold up, we'll just go to the next item, and we'll come back to that. Item 20, where's Mr. Fuhr? Not ready on that one. Okay, he's not ready on that one either, hold on, we'll just go to the next one.
28 was called special by Councilmember Walters.
28, Ms. Walters, you called item, oh, I'm sorry, Cindy, which one did you want to speak on? Okay, we'll come back to that, okay. Ms. Walters, item 28.
Item 28 says an MOU for salary bonus for zoo chief veterinarian. I'd like to know what this is about.
All right, let's see if we can get you an answer. Come right up.
And I, I didn't think that the council was in habit, in the habit of granting bonuses. I know the mayor's office engaged in that.
This was an item that was considered by the EERC, and it's actually, it's an MOU amendment to the Professional Managers Association contract, and it's for the purpose, the reason for the bonus was to resolve a recruitment problem. The department had been recruiting for quite some time.
Excuse me one second, it's very noisy back here, it's very hard to hear you, it's not your fault. Can we move some of those conversations out? Sorry, go ahead, Royce.
For a number of months, the zoo department was engaging in a recruitment effort and had been unsuccessful in finding somebody at the salary that was in place, and so, as a result of that, we recommended that the salary be increased for this one particular position. The reason it's a bonus is that there are more than one position in the class, and we felt that the bonus was appropriate for the class in the zoo, but not for in the other departments.
All right, well, is it a, a one-time payment, or is it an ongoing salary increase?
It's an ongoing salary increase for this one particular position.
All right, then, why do we characterize it as a bonus? Because a salary bonus, to me, is something that happens once. It may happen annually, but it's once at, at the end of whatever period. But you're saying this is going to be an ongoing salary increase, why, why don't we just say the salary for this position will be a certain range?
That's the terminology that we've used, that is a bonus. It could be characterized as a one-time, but we have used the term bonus to apply both to a one-time situation and to an ongoing salary increase.
Well, let me understand again exactly what this is. Is it a one-time bonus, or is it an ongoing salary increase?
It is an ongoing salary increase, but we have used the term bonus to apply to that situation in the past.
Well, could I ask that in the future, you clarify your language, that if it's an ongoing salary increase for a particular position, that you characterize it as such? If it's a one-time payment, a bonus of some sort, that you would characterize that as a bonus?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Item 28 is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. I think we better do forthwith on that one also. Next item.
Item 29 called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Uh, Mr. Ridley Thomas, are you...
I'm muted.
Oh, all right, Mr. Ridley Thomas has to step out on this one, so, is there anybody else who wishes to, so take note that he's gone. Okay, item 29 is before us. Anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. All right, are we ready to go back to any of these other items? Mr. Hernandez was looking for, I don't know, I mean, Mr. Deaton is here, let's go to item 18.
Mr. Deaton, I was just, one, I noticed that in the report, it's asking us to waive the competitive bidding process and to sole source the contract for the tracking mechanism, and this tracking mechanism that's being recommended is currently being used, I guess, in Pittsburgh?
The, indirectly, the firm that is, we are contracting for, for Teams 2, did the, the equivalent of Teams 2 in Pittsburgh.
And what were some of the complexities they found in Pittsburgh?
The, well, the same complexities we're finding, the, probably the major difference in Pittsburgh vis-à-vis implementing this in LAPD is that they, in Los Angeles Police Department, several systems currently, existing systems exist for a lot of the data items, they have to be worked on to feed into the system. In the case of Pittsburgh, there were no existing systems, and so, a lot of it was done from scratch.
Right, now, where, where else do they have some kind of a system like this functioning?
Where else? There, it's, there's two places, operating as best I know, one is the Sheriff's Department and, Los Angeles Sheriff's Department in, in Pittsburgh. Leichhardt is also in the process of designing one for the state of, state of New Jersey, the state police.
Now, isn't there another one in Texas?
Oh.
No, it's not, the mic just wasn't up loud.
In any event, I, the two other places that I'm aware of are, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department has a similar type Teams 2 system, and there's one that's operating in Pittsburgh, there's one in design in New Jersey. I'm unaware of any in, in Texas.
Okay. My concern is us recreating a wheel that might not work to, to deal with the issues we wanted to deal with. And I'm asking the questions because I wanted to know if there was, what you're saying, only three cities currently right now, one being the county of Los Angeles, have a system in place?
That's correct.
Or, and that the two outside of the Los Angeles area are currently being developed.
One is being developed in New Jersey, the other one in Pittsburgh is operating, and that was the, the firm that we're using for Teams 2 designed and implemented that system.
And there's no other firms out there that do it, then?
There are, there is no other firm that has done it recently. What, the reason that we got involved with Leichhardt Systems is that, as you recall, in the initial process of selecting a contractor for the feasibility of Teams 2, an RFP process was rejected. Our office, the CEO's office, and the police department looked around, we sent people back to Pittsburgh. Leichhardt was able to complete that feasibility study, and this, this design phase of the, of the Teams 2 is a follow-on to that feasibility study, and was contemplated at the time that we did the feasibility study.
Right, I think Ms. Chick and Mr. Fuhr would be interested, because when we're dealing with these computer tracking mechanisms, for some reason, we create them, and then we recreate them, and we recreate them, and we haven't really been able to establish a system that works very well for us when it comes to LAPD. Here, we're talking about a tracking mechanism of personnel, and I, I think that we were dealing with some of the issues of personnel before, and, and we're sole sourcing it. And, and I just wasn't sure if we basically had a perspective of what's out there in, in the nation that might be working. And the Department of Justice, do they recommend a system? Mr. Deaton?
Right, the, in fact, in, when we, two things... Right, the, in fact, in, when we, two things. One is when we were looking for individuals to do the feasibility and also individuals to do the design for Teams 2, we called around, we talked to both the Justice Department and to the, the monitor of the consent decree in Pittsburgh and in New Jersey to find out if this firm was in fact being successful in their implementation and, and they, they got high marks on all counts.
And is the monitor in Pittsburgh applying to be a monitor here?
Yes, he has.
So, the same monitor from Pittsburgh's system who recommended the systems applying to be a monitor here?
That's correct. No monitor has been selected.
Right, no monitor has been selected. So, having this system in place, will that bias any of the other teams? Will that create a bias?
A bias against other monitors because of?
Familiarity with the system?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Yeah, okay, my time's running, I just wanted, I thought that this was an important juncture in this process that we should really ask some, some of the questions and have them on the record so that when it comes back, we either made the right decision or made the wrong decision, but we as a council will be held accountable for these decisions.
Ms. Misekowsky.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the comments and the questions that Mr. Hernandez has asked and in fact, there have been many questions asked like this in our own team process, which is a group of people including Oars, including Mr. Deaton, including the mayor's office, including the Police Department. And members of the council, when we were embarking on this, as you remember, we had a problem. We, it was the non-delivery of Teams 2 over the last five or six years that put us in somewhat a precarious position, we found ourselves, having to do with the consent decree and the Department of Justice looking over our shoulder. It was our intent to really expedite a process and move forward, but move forward knowledgeably. As the council initially last year instructed the mayor and the CLA to move forward with signing a contract and suspending the RFP project but to find out who could do the job and move forward, there were issues raised within the LAPD about systems that were already in place, systems that had already been contracted for, and the need to make sure that they could be integrated. As we all know, systems today is a very, very complex technological world. And if we're spending a lot of money in one area and a lot of money in another area and those two systems aren't going to talk to each other, we're going to be in very, very, we're going to be farther behind than we should be. And it was as a consequence of so, those, that sharing of information and in fact, as you see today, even from the recommendation today, although we are working with Leichart, we are also spending money to complete another project on a use of force and making sure that Leichart and the use of force providers are talking to each other because we have many, many other systems within the Police Department that we don't need to reinvent, we just need to make sure that they are integrated. So, and this is, the other thing about this is not only the feasibility and the design, but ultimately, and I think the thing that was most important to our, to my way of thinking and that the ad hoc committee when we looked at it, was the integration and making sure that money and efforts and systems are not just being spent and provided right now that are going to be jumped. They have to work, there also have to be deliverables. This is not a contract that goes out never-ending, which we're going to see umpty-ump amendments on it, without deliverables at each level and an ability to say if there needs to be a change course, if we need to alter something, we can, but we need real measurable, deliverable services in both design and feasibility and then implementation. Because this is the thing we told the Department of Justice as within two years, this system would be up and running. And we, we have to, we have, I think, the best people and the best oversight team on this, not just one, it's not all in one agency saying, "Trust us, this is okay." It's everybody who should be at the table, who we could imagine being at the table, to make sure that this is being provided. So, I think that recommending this and keeping close track of it as we get further reports and in fact, interestingly, it wasn't the, the Teams 2 development that was as problematic or starting to raise some concerns, it was the issue of the independent monitor, which is raising some concerns because, as you remember, under the consent decree, we are supposed to be in agreement with DOJ and the city's team, which is five different people. And right now, there are discussions because there are different choices and that needs to be brought to the council. We've asked that there be a placeholder next week to have a report on that because that is a, right now, where there might be at least some issues of disagreement, some issues in terms of course selection that the council may have to address. But on Teams 2, where there had been perceived problems, perceived, perceived conflicts, everyone from the police firm to the mayor to the CLA to Oars and the providers, understanding each other, talking to each other in an agreement with each other, are on the, at the same place.
All right, I have two more people who want to be heard, Mr. Deaton wanted to respond to some.
I just wanted to add one other thing. There, the recommendation, one applies not only to Leichart but also another firm that is doing the complaint management system and that firm was involved with the Police Department on the complaint management system before we got to this point with the consent decree. They had some knowledge relative to the complaint system and there's a need to move ahead on that one as well because the, as you recall in the consent decree, the management of the complaints throughout the system are crucial, number one. And number two, we need to be able to, and we're working with ITA and the Police Department and Oars, et cetera, to ensure that that system is compatible with the, with Teams 2 as well. So, it's, it's not just one firm that we're talking about here, it's trying to move this whole thing forward quickly.
Ms. Check.
Yeah, I appreciate the fuller discussion and explanation from my colleague, from Mr. Deaton. We are also looking to very much bring our payroll system to a state-of-the-art place. As Teams 2 gets created and implemented, are there opportunities for interface or needs for interface? That's one question. And two, as Teams 2 moves forward, is it a program that also can be built on or off of or in or relate to, for instance, deployment plan software?
Well, on the first one relative to the payroll system, the first stage of the payroll system is to get the checks to be sure.
Right, not phase one.
And just the payment. And the phase two aspect, which is more of the personnel aspect, I think eventually there will need to be an interface because there's a need on Teams 2 to identify where a particular officer was employed at a particular time, what division, under what supervisor, et cetera.
That's why I also see the connection to the deployment point.
Right, and so, right, and that is clearly a, an opportunity and also a necessity to coordinate those two systems. As it relates to deployment or in general, the Police Department's systems, with the great opportunity to go well beyond my understanding of this, but the, we're in the, in the process in this system of creating what is known as a data warehouse. And as best I can determine, a data warehouse is, you collect all kinds of common information in, on, in a data processing format that you get to manage from all various sources and then various systems draw from that data to determine certain things, not the least of which, in this case, is at-risk behavior in the Teams 2 case. That same data, whether it's arrests or use of force, et cetera, also have the possibilities to be used for a variety of other purposes, not the least of which is deployment.
Okay, so, but going back to the interface someday between payroll and Teams 2, the players involved in both systems are keeping that in mind so that there's ease of interface rather than having to reinvent the wheel sometime later.
Right, absolutely. The, in fact, I had a discussion with representatives of LAPD relative to the capturing of information. This also applies, works its way into the whole issue of risk management and our dealings with the courts as well as far as having information, so this is.
Multi-use.
And very cognizant of the fact that, that if we do something in one area, that we are impacting potentially other areas that we need to be improving as well.
And I'm pleased to hear that answer, but also the discussion about relating to deployment because it was a great surprise and dismay to me when I first learned that today, the LAPD doesn't really have a program or the ability to have the chief push a button and know where each officer is at any given time. And the advantages and the positives of Teams 2, instead of always hearing it connected to some consent decree that's been quote, "forced," you know, upon us, there are positives all over the place for the department and for the people it serves by putting this system in place. So, I'm glad to hear about all the other benefits as well.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, and, Mr. Deaton, I really do appreciate your explanations. I think we're at a crossroads here and, and what's hard for me to understand is, is the fact that we haven't been able to do this before and now we think we're going to be able to do it. And again, I was more concerned by the fact that we were sole sourcing it and now I understand that we've put a package together that we're, in essence, sole sourcing because we think that's what can be implemented. I thought it was important that we all participate in that conversation because to me, what the Department of Justice says is important as part of this partnership that's going to deal with re-establishing the credibility in the city of Los Angeles, what you say to me is very important. And, and for some reason, when it comes to these technical systems, we have stood out from, let's say, the LA County Sheriff's Department, we have not been able to put something in place. And, and we've gone through lawsuits dealing with payroll systems that we've just, as we were going through that lawsuit, we were not able to put something in place. And now, we believe that this system will, will satisfy the needs of the consent decree and the needs of the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. So, I wanted to ask those questions for that reason because I think this is a very complicated process. We're at that threshold right now, that milestone of, of moving in the direction of having something in place, but I, I'm not going to be here in two years, but in two years, I wouldn't want this council to sit here debating the fact that the system didn't work. And it's not working. And, and we need to infuse many more dollars. So, that's why I wanted to ask the questions openly and I thought we should have some
Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to focus on another component of this for a moment and that's the aspect of the report that pertains to the selection of the monitor. Now, the consent decree originally specified, we have a monitor about a month ago. Of course, the consent decree is not a signed document and the judge has expressed interest in weighing in on the content of it in particular regards to what the monitor would, who the monitor would be. I guess, Mr. Deaton, we'll be getting a report a week from today, right, on the status of that?
Yes.
Yes. And we've had a lot of discussions about this, the point being that ideally, let me ask you this, do you think that by next week, we will have been, we'll be in a position to know who a consensus choice is for the monitor?
No.
Well, you asked him.
No, no, there's usually this expansive response, today we're very clipped answers. I think I understand the reason for that, but it's going to.
But I believe we will, you want more expansive answer?
Yes.
I'll be happy to try to provide it.
It's on your time though, Mike.
It's okay.
I think we will, we'll be agreeing on a, I think we'll be back on track on a process to, to get there. I mean, it's been, it's been more complicated than we thought and we're working through that with justice and we think we'll, we'll have a, a plan by next Tuesday.
Okay, all right. And also with regard to the, I actually think I know what you meant by that, with regard to the balance of the report, I just want to say again, one of the major issues that we've been confronting in Ms. Misekowsky's committee is the effort to assure that all the players are really on the same team privately and publicly with regard to Teams 2. You know, it, we, we will never be able to succeed at making this work if there is at any level a disagreement about whether this is the right contractor, about the direction in which we are heading. Mr. Deaton, everything I know suggests that you've been really focused on moving us full speed ahead. Publicly, that's what I hear from other parties as well, privately, I'm not always so sure. Is it your best understanding that at this juncture, having, that that's all water under the bridge and that there is a unified focus on this contractor being an effective implementer of Teams 2?
Yes, I, quite frankly, I think we're, we went through some time that we needed to, we had some redefined goals and in that process, there was an opportunity for us to get to know each other better and we've done that. But I think we're moving ahead very well. Also, I want you to, to recall on our, the Teams 2 approach is one, as was expressed earlier, is that this is not a two-year contract per se, it's a series of three-month contracts in which at each stage of the game, if we are not being successful, we're going to figure out why and either correct the problem or take another direction. We're not going to wait and not be in a situation that Mr. Hernandez indicated that two years from now that you didn't find out that we were not successful. You may find out in three months we weren't, but, but right away, we intend to find out sooner than later and, and make midstream corrections and whatever it takes to get this done. And I think that we have, at this stage, the full cooperation of LAPD, ITA, the mayor's office and our office and Oars. I have no problems.
We're going to run a three-minute clock on you too.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Your frowns will do just fine, thank you.
I've been told never to play poker. All right, I believe that brings us to where we are ready to vote on item 18. Open the roll on item 18, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Do we need that forthwith? All right, so I guess we don't. Now, let's go back to item 10. I believe we are finally ready to vote on item 10. Is there any further counsel comment? Somebody turn off the phone? Item 10 is the commissioner. Yeah, you don't have to do anything, just sit tight. All right, are we ready? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Have a nice rest of the day, what we've left you of it and forthwith on that, please. All right, I believe that brings us to item 20. What happened to Mr. Fuhr? Mr. Fuhr?
Yes.
Are you ready on item 20? Yes or no, or shall I go to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, item 20. You wish to be heard? Push the speaker button.
I, I do. Mr. Ridley Thomas, do you want to speak first on this?
Please, one of you push the speaker button.
Mark, do you want to speak first on this or?
Okay, Mark's speaking first. He beat you to it. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I'm delighted that we have arrived at this point in time to move forward. The shopping center, retail center known as Chesterfield Square, some 20-plus acres in the heart of South Los Angeles, the first such retail center to be built in well over a decade and certainly the first south of the Santa Monica Freeway for even a longer period in time than that. We believe the issue of jobs being generated, we believe the extent to which we have opportunities for economic development being spurred, we believe that the issue of redevelopment and revitalization is made real in the context of the Chesterfield Square project. Several committees have reviewed this, three to be precise. We are now at the point of adoption and I would want to strongly urge unanimous vote for the Chesterfield Square project and with thanks to the Chair of Community Economic Development Housing, Community Redevelopment and finally Budget and Finance. Madam President, I urge a unanimous vote for the Chesterfield Square project.
Well, we'll hope we can get there. Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you, Madam President. I, as I've said to, to Mr. Ridley Thomas, personally I have several goals here which I hope we can achieve all of. The first is, this is a very important project in Mr. Ridley Thomas's district in a community that really needs to have an infusion of retail. And so, this project, as we said in budget committee, should go forward. And Mr. Ridley Thomas deserves a lot of credit for this project. It's called the Genesis Project but it really began with Mr. Ridley Thomas and the developer. The issue that I wanted to rise and discuss is this. On December 4th, this council requested of the mayor's office pursuant to a motion unanimously adopted that it provide by the middle of January, very specific information about all the Genesis projects, including the quality of the jobs as well as the quantity of them, are they living wage or not? Who are the developers and so forth? Well, months have passed, the report is not available to us, there's no sign it will ever be available to us. That motion, which was authored by Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Goldberg. That motion, which was authored by Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Goldberg, actually memorialized many requests that I had made of the Mayor's Office months earlier, no response. Here's the deal: We are giving big subsidies to developers through these projects. The question on the table is, should the, what should the quality of the jobs of the tenants be? From my standpoint, I would like to see us evolve an approach under which at least a minimum percentage of the jobs at the site of these developments would be mandated to be living wage jobs. In the case of Mr. Ridley Thomas's development at Chesterfield Square, the very worst case is that 69% of the jobs are living wage jobs. So that any threshold which we should entertain, council members, is already, I think, surpassed by the facts in this case, which is why this project, I think, should move forward, among other reasons. But colleagues, I rise to ask the question: Shouldn't we be compelling that a developer receiving a subsidy from the city, especially the magnitude we're talking about in the Genesis projects, be required to mandate living wage jobs at the site? And to me, the question isn't whether that mandate should be included, it's what the threshold should be. Now, today, we're in an awkward position because the project is before us, it's time-sensitive, we don't have the report from the Mayor's Office, and there's been no consideration given, in general, to the important policy question, where is that cutoff point? If we require living wage jobs of a certain percentage at a site, where is the point at which the subsidy would have to be increased? But I would like that discussion to happen immediately because, if not, we're going to be giving away city dollars, and in other projects, there's no guarantee that about 70% of the jobs will be living wage jobs. There might be 20% living wage jobs-
Okay.
-and a bunch of dead-end jobs. And what happens then? I'll press my button again.
What happens then is Mr. Hernandez gets to talk. Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, I just want everybody to read item 6 and item 7 of the report because, one, item 6 is requesting from OARS and the Office of Finance and Control to establish a procedure to identify and track and audit all revenues attributed for all city projects in general. And Chesterfield Square, in particular, the proposed, is to use site-specific revenues for repayment sources. And that's real important in these projects because this particular project is at basically the policy limit of the increments being used for purposes of development. And we set that policy at, at counsel of 50%. The seventh one basically is asking that OARS track and that they submit all the necessary documents in terms of the living wage section prior to the execution of the loan agreement. And I want to say that because that's part of what's before us today. And I really appreciate the comments made by Mr. Fuhrer because when we're sitting on CED and these economic development projects come before us, and many of them are bond issuances, we just had one in Mr. Bernstein's district for a nonprofit where we're requiring the living wage ordinance to apply. And the job retention ordinance should also be part of it whenever city subsidies are used. I also know for a fact that we have instances in these kinds of businesses where they're not full-time jobs, just like the city has when it has assistant recreation leaders who aren't full-time jobs and aren't getting medical insurance and all these other issues. And so we need to deal with that issue as a whole. I just know that part of the problem we have with these kinds of projects is deadlines and how they get implemented. And so our city subsidies, when we talk about city subsidies, we put those requirements up front. It's not something that's coming in at the end. Developers in my district have come to me and realized that, one, they didn't want city subsidies because of the requirements of the city that are put up front, and they still do the development of the project. The only experience I've had with this kind of a project that's been completed is the Home Depot at the Lower East California Center. And I need people to know that, one, when that center was established, we used less than, less than, we thought we're going to need for increments to pay back the city for the loan. What we thought was going to be 30% ended up being about 17% because of the success of the Home Depot. I also want people to know that we audited their employment base, and we found out that instead of 85%, as they had said that they were going to hire locally, I mean, that they said they had done, they only hired 78% locally. But the audit told the 78% of the residents that surround that facility got new jobs, and the fact that they got higher-paying jobs than the living wage ordinance required. So the audit process is real important in these projects. We found that out with the Staples Center. I think the model's being used. We found that out with the Home Depot, and I'm hoping that's the same case with Chesterfield. And that's why I just urge us to pass it.
Mr. Fuhrer? I'm sorry, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I think what, one of the nerves that has been struck in this debate is the fact that we have seen economic redevelopment occurring outside the inner city, and these debates were not waged or not really made a factor when these economic redevelopments occurred outside of the inner city. And now that we're moving to do economic redevelopment in the inner city, there's a large concern on the part of us, council members who represent the inner city, as to why, all of a sudden, the interest in imposing these new hoops to be jumped through for the inner-city developments when they were not imposed on the developments outside the inner city. So I'm not sure if today is the appropriate time to debate this, but I think everyone should know that us, representatives from the inner city, take a real close look at the timing of this debate, considering most of the economic redevelopment outside of our communities has been either completed or basically in the process of being constructed. I simply raise that as a cautious note, that our debate maybe need to move to another forum, maybe to committee, but at this point, it is definitely hitting a nerve on the part of all of us who represent the inner city in our projects that are really, right now, going through funding and restructuring to make it viable for us to have redevelopment in our districts.
Ms. Chik.
Yes, I'm interested in hearing from my colleague, Mr. Fuhrer, in terms of how we do what he is suggesting, and that is support the project moving forward, and I rise in support as well, but also to address what I think is a citywide concern. This isn't about anybody's district, and it's not about a particular project. It is about staying in sync with a citywide policy about giving subsidies and public dollars to developments or employers without assuring, or we're against lack of assurance, that what we are supporting with public dollars is the creation of jobs that keep people in poverty and needing to be subsidized by public dollars through welfare. I mean, that doesn't make sense. That's what the living wage policy is all about. So I would like, in terms of going forward, to find a way, and I look to you, Mr. Fuhrer, to, on a very short timeline, get the responses we need to create a policy similar to our living wage policy to apply fairly inequitably but appropriately to future Genesis projects. And clearly, as you showed, this one would qualify under any circumstances, and that's why I'm very comfortable supporting it today.
Mr. Fuhrer?
Thank you, Madam President. I, let me, let me try this, to concretize the, the approach. Again, as I've said, this project is not the, the issue, it's the precedent that we create by not having a precise policy. I was, I'm going to move that the council, before I move, let me say this: Mr. Ridley Thomas, I think appropriately, in our prior discussions on this issue, his and mine, said, "Look, if we set a threshold of X number of jobs at these projects, the living wage jobs, what will the consequences be for the level of city subsidy necessary, not on this project because it meets a lot of requirements, but in the future?" It's a good question, and I agree that we shouldn't be just making a policy using a number out of the air without knowing the implications. But I also have very strong views that we should have a policy in place very soon because there'll be a number of other city subsidized projects coming to us for approval or rejection. With that in mind, I'm going to move that we, we set a threshold for analysis of a minimum of 50% as a starter of the jobs at city subsidized developments be living wage jobs, and have that proposal go to Mr. Hernandez's committee at, I think, Mike had indicated, and will be willing to do that in the next meeting, with analysis from city staff. And if it needs to be continued for a week because the analysis isn't done, that's okay, but a short timeframe, so we know for sure that we are fulfilling a number of goals with these projects, including a goal which Ms. Chik very eloquently stated, and that is, if one of the fundamental reasons to subsidize these projects is to create jobs in neighborhoods where people don't have them in our city, is a fundamental goal, shouldn't we be creating jobs that have a future, that have benefits, that have a salary that is at least a modicum of what's necessary to provide decent housing for people? I think that's a goal we should all get behind. It's one which should unify us here, not divide us on the city council. So that's my motion, that that go to committee with a short timeframe back, so we can have an analysis done by city experts, and the city can make an intelligent decision quickly on how to deal with these other projects.
Ms. Mizakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The issue, I think, as it relates to item 6, which is the stuff, what we're talking about today, relative to in the future and creating thresholds for site-specific revenues and looking at whether it's other Genesis projects or other projects, was the issue that I raised in committee. And I don't think that this particular instruction quite captured my concern. And my concern is not only that we look at a site-specific project and the revenue generated and a cap and/or a threshold for repayment. And again, let me also say, I have no, I want to make sure that whatever we're discussing today, that we approve this project, and I don't think there's anyone saying anything different. What we are talking about is in the future, as we look at projects like this, and my concern is that we not have a site-specific cap for each project, but as a city, we look to see if we need a cap for all kinds of projects like this, as it relates to, just as we did in our bonded indebtedness, we said there should be a policy that we will never go into debt more than X percent and issues like that. So I think that I would like to just amend what Mr. Fuhrer has suggested, that in the separate instruction on a future review of different projects, that we look at whether or if or how the city should be looking at how many separate site-specific projects with separate debt guaranteed and an income stream out of what would be general fund money in some instances, what and where should a threshold be established? So I think that that, that instruction has Mike, is, has made it, is appropriate for an overall review after this project is approved, but in no way holding up this project. Let this one go through because this one does set a standard that I think others should try to achieve.
Thank you. Let me just clarify, before I call on you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Fuhrer, can I just clarify your motion? Were you, in asking that some of this go back to committee, were you suggesting that the whole thing go to committee?
No, let me be very clear.
Okay.
I, in committee-supported and support now, moving forward with the Chesterfield Square project, that reflects a budget committee recommendation.
Wait, hold on. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I want, I want to make sure you hear this.
What I wanted to do, however, is to assure that we have analysis quickly of thresholds of minimum, of living wage jobs-
Right, okay.
-for prospective purposes.
What I wanted to make sure was whether, so that we all understood what we were talking about here, in case anybody wanted to respond to your motion.
Right.
What, what, sorry. It's, wait, it's Mr. Ridley Thomas's turn. Hit your button. Go ahead, Mark.
Madam President, members of the council, I attempted to speak to the importance of this project and to indicate that it has been subjected, you might say, to scrutiny comparable to other projects and perhaps even more. It has been reviewed by the three committees to which I referred earlier. It is a jobs generator in excess of 500 jobs will be located here at Western and Slauson in the Chesterfield Square project. It does enjoy the support of significant developers that are faith-based, that are major developers, that are indigenous developers, is a rather innovative combination of persons involved. In addition to that, absent this project, there is no revenue stream to which we can point that would be generated from that particular locale. And I want to say that it is a very promising scenario that the CRA and other analysts and forecasters point to. Even in a conservative manner, this looks very good. I think that the issue of subsidy is fundamentally important. There is a motion introduced by Ridley Thomas and Galanter several months ago, joined in by Hernandez, to move forward an agenda that causes us to bring coherence to the matter of subsidies. Mr. Hernandez's point is quite correct. It ought not be ad hoc. We ought to have policies that inform those decisions. Ms. Chik, I would wish for you to know that this is a citywide issue, but the question that we have to come to grips with is whether or not, when we talk about the living wage ordinance being applied to tenants and the like, we are really understanding who will ultimately bear the cost. Will it be the private sector or the public sector? My best analysis is that it will ultimately be the public sector. And is it the case that the public sector is willing to deepen its subsidies of this project, of these projects pursuant to the imposition of that? Now, recent studies from UCLA Business School and otherwise treat this issue. I think that's the nub. Ms. Galanter, I would ask that we renew the motion that we introduced to cause this issue to come to head. It is more comprehensive than the request Mr. Fuhrer has made. It can and should be before CR, the HCR and CD, D, CED, thank you, Mr. Pacheco, and whoever else we deem appropriate, but that is what we need to do. I urge your unanimous support of the reports before us regarding Chesterfield Square.
All right, so let me just clarify, so we're still all clear on this, that, Mark, that there's, we, the recommendation, I think, from both of you is to approve Chesterfield Square, from everybody, actually.
Correct.
And separately, Mr. Fuhrer has asked that some of the, and Ms. Chik, asked that some of these same items be discussed in a larger, as did we.
And the CLA is already working on that, and has been.
Okay, good. But we still have two more people who want to be heard, so hang on. Mr. Pacheco is next.
Madam President, colleagues, I think what's most bothersome about today's debate is that it's a rehash of a debate that we had a couple of months ago, and it seems that, once again, the timing of the debate, we, I beg the question as to why we're having this debate when both CED and HCR and our office is working closely with the Living Wage Coalition to develop a comprehensive policy for onsite jobs at all the redevelopment areas, whether or not the CRA should adopt the living wage type ordinance as they do their work, what implications it will have on pre-existing tenants at redevelopment sites since they didn't bargain for this when they were pre-existing and are surviving, but we're trying to enhance a site, whether or not it should extend to onsite construction, not construction, but custodial, janitorial during construction? Well, I mean, there's a lot of questions that we have been in discussion with the Living Wage Coalition on all of these redevelopment sites. The thing I think that no one is appreciating is the fact that the timing of the whole debate was on the eve of Ms. Goldberg leaving, and if you don't remember that meeting, let me refresh your memory, that that was very difficult for us to accept in terms of all of us who have these impending, upcoming projects, and we see all this development occur prior to our projects being developed, and they did not have to jump through those hoops. I can't be any more clear than that on this issue, but we are working with the Living Wage Coalition to develop a comprehensive policy on all of our development sites, whether they be Genesis sites, CRA sites, block grant sites, everything in the city, so we have a comprehensive plan that does what we want it to do: Create long-lasting career opportunity jobs for our inner-city youth and young adults, and at the same time, not choke the developments in those areas. So I just find it odd that we would have this debate today on Chesterfield, and maybe people should just follow our own debates as they've been raised by our colleagues on these issues, and that we sent them already to committee two months ago, and we are working hard with our partners on this issue, the Living Wage Coalition, to address- hard with our partners on this issue, the Living Wage Coalition, to address these concerns. I’m not saying they’re not valid concerns. What I find awkward is why are we having them today if we raised them as a council office a couple of months ago? And not only did we raise them as a council office a couple of months ago, but we chastised the mayor’s office for not providing adequate information, and then they came and reported to CED all the information. So I’m not sure what’s going on here, but we’ve rehashed this issue numerous times, and the council is working on this, and we’re all supporters of the living wage. So I really question the timing of this whole issue and raising it today.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, I lost him. You wanted, you’re, okay, okay. Open the roll. Now, let’s be clear what we’re opening the roll on. We are approving Chesterfield Square, and we’re asking for some reports that seem to be already in progress between the CLA’s office and Mr. Pacheco’s committee.
Are those separate votes?
No, I don’t think so, unless you, unless you feel a need to make them separate votes. All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that’s approved.
Thank you.
Now then, I’ve been told that because—
Fourth with on that, Madam President.
—forthwith, that because somebody has to leave who was excused today but came in anyway, that we need to go to Item Forty next. Mr. Padilla, I believe you called Item Forty special. Mr. Padilla, you called Item Forty special. Please push the speaker button. Please push the speaker button. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to make a request, one small amendment, I believe in concurrence with the author of the motion, and I about read it as Item Forty A, another amendment, technical in nature. My amendment was to request that we do move forward with granting the department the authority to negotiate the lease, but would request that the department come back to ITGS for authority to execute the lease. As we know, over the last couple of months, we’ve had General Services up here unable to answer questions they should have been able to answer, so we’re just trying to keep a little bit tighter control in the department.
Mr. Burnson.
I don’t have any problem with that, but as the discussion I had with you earlier, we need, we need to move forward, and General Services has to move quickly on these things so that the public benefit is not lost for a long period of time.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chairman, members of council, one, I appreciate Councilmember Padilla working with us on this issue. We do have some timeframes that we’re trying to comply. What we’re doing is we’re building a housing project that will be family housing and some senior housing in Chinatown. And right next to the project itself, there’s a parcel of land that’s landlocked, and we negotiated with the developers, which is the Chinatown Service Center, to basically use that land to develop a childcare center that would go next door to it. And they’ll be paying the city back for the use of that land through in-kind services. That parcel is essential for the childcare center. Initially, we were trying to get a primary school built there. The school district wasn’t really interested in building a primary school there. It’ll also be next to the city’s new library that’s going on in Chinatown. And so I just asked for the adoption of the motion, and I appreciate the fact that Mr. Padilla’s office will review the lease after it’s been negotiated.
All right, so just let me be clear what we’ve got before us, since I hope we’re ready to vote. Mr. Hernandez, you have a Forty A that is circulating?
Right, it’s been circulated, being circulated now.
We don’t have it yet, unless it’s in there.
I think she’s running around with it right now.
Could you look and see if it’s in there?
Okay, well, the verbal motion, basically what the motion says, if I can reflect my age by putting my glasses on. Amend Item Forty of the council agenda today, April 4th, relative to the lease with the adoption and purchase of Chinatown Service Center for city-owned property located at 521 Caesar Chavez Avenue, as follows. Four, the value of CSE, childcare service, will be quantified by CDD. Lease terms is to be, been ten years with CSE, able to exercise its option to purchase at any time during the term of the lease, as long it is not in default on the lease. The purchase price is to be determined appraisal of fair market value at the time may the exercise of the option. General Service Department may consent to subordinate to the leases of Chinatown Service Center centers if it determines upon review by the city attorney that such subordination is necessary for feasibility of the project and does not impair the city’s security.
Okay, so we have your motion, which is now being circulated.
And amended, right.
I just cut the copy here, your amendment. We have Mr. Padilla’s verbal amendment, which you concurred in.
Right.
Okay, the matter is now before us as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that’s approved.
Thank you. Thank you, ma’am.
Okay, that brings us back to, I believe, Item Thirty-One, which is also Mr. Padilla’s. Would you hit the speaker button, please? I’m sorry, Ms. Chick, are you on Item Thirty-One?
Also, yes.
Okay, but I’m going to let him go first, because it was, he called it special.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. If CLA staff can come forward on this item? Just had a couple of questions. Two questions or concerns, if you will, not against the item, because I do support the report before us, but the two questions and concerns I wanted to raise and ask staff to give us their thoughts are as follows. Number one, we seem to be having problems, specifically within the Department of Wrecking Parks, on the implementation of a lot of projects. With an increase of funding from the city, with Prop K having been, you know, coming to fruition over the last several years, and certainly is Prop Twelve and Thirteen at the state level, the city has been more than competitive and successful in getting various projects approved and funded. And it seems that we get stagnant through the department in the actual implementation and keeping the paperwork going on time. Now, we’re being, we’re asking to streamline the grant writing process and the grant approval process through the city, which is great. It’s a great idea. What I don’t want to set us up for is yet another windfall of success that we’re not able to follow through on. So I want to know how the discussion around streamlining the process took place in the context of actually following through on the projects. That’s number one. Number two, given, I know there’s safeguards are in place, that this council still has to approve the, have receiving of the grants, but if we’re giving much more flexibility, much more liberty to the department staff on the actual research and application for grant funding, I just want to also know that we’re putting safeguards in place, that there’s an equitable pursuit of funding throughout the city, and that we don’t fall into a situation where staff can get really happy about doing a lot of projects in one part of the city and not look at the needs of other parts of the city.
Michael Karsh with the CLA’s office. To answer your first question, how the streamlining is being implemented, that would be found in A, B, and C, where they have found that certain small grants, well, as a caveat to begin with, we’re only talking about the smaller grants. The large, large grants that are found in CDBG and the LLEBG, those are handled in a different process, which would not be applicable in this case. So we’re talking about the small grants. Number two, if there is no matching funds required by the city and no other matching resources, such as free rent in a building or vehicles being given, only in that situation would the general manager be able to then submit the application for the grant. If time is of the essence and there would be city matching funds, then there must be notification to the mayor and the council at the same time that he submits the application. Under either situation, whether there’s matching grants or not matching grants, the council will have to approve receipt of the grant. So that is the safeguard, which goes to answer your second question as well. If there appears to be some lopsided favoritism to one area of the city or one type of project over another, there is an opportunity to catch it at that, at that point. If the council should say, no, we don’t want you to accept that grant, then the grant would be rescinded, we would not receive the money. The, the one thing that we are putting into, or that the departments have agreed on with the working group that we got together for this, to sort of give a little more structure to it, is the addition of a mission statement as part of the budget process. The department is already preparing their budget requests, they’re already describing all the grants that they do receive, and it appeared to be relevant to have a statement somewhere in that document that says what their outline of missions are during the year, and therefore, that would be guidance for them in applying for a grant where the deadlines seem to be short and there’s no matching funds. Hopefully, that would be able to catch, that would be a flag at the beginning of the year if you think that the mission statement is too broad or it would give too much leeway.
As far as the staffing concern?
Pardon me?
What about the staffing concern?
There should be no additional staffing concern. The, the grant applications still have to be done by the same people in the departments. There would be no additional duty on them, except by the people who would prepare the budget information that is submitted to the mayor and the council. At that point, the mission statement has to be made. It should be achievable with the existing resources.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I still don’t know if we resolved the staffing concern, or if we’re going to today. You know, I hope we are successful in becoming more and more competitive for funding, but we do need to take a look at, and I know we will through the budget process coming up next month, the, the capacity within the department and the staff to actually implement and follow through on the projects that we’ve been successful in getting.
Ms. Chick.
Yes, and I appreciate my colleagues’ concerns, because this is meant to be an improvement, and we have to make sure that it is exactly that. I had asked for the CLA to make recommendations on how to streamline the grant process, after serving on a variety of committees and realizing that departments often have to come to multiple committees to request permission to apply for a grant, and then they have to come back often through another multiple group of committees to ask for permission to accept a grant. And what that has sometimes done has been to push our staff up against a brick wall on timing in getting an application in, in the proper timeline, in getting the right permission. But at the same time, I was looking to streamline the process, I also wanted to make sure that city departments aren’t applying and receiving grants just to get money for money’s sake, and that they’re applying for grants that take them on a detour away from achieving the mission and the goals and objectives of their department. In other words, doing pilot projects that maybe some funding agency thinks is interesting, but really is going to detract staff time and energy from doing what a city department is first and foremost meant to do. And finally, to be very careful still about departments applying and receiving grants that require a commitment of city staff and funds on our part. And what has been recommended, I think, accomplishes all of the above in a, in a very good way. And I know that we’re going to be cautious in the beginning, and if it needs tweaking, we’ll do that. But to have staff come and ask permission to apply for a grant to three different committees when there are simpler ways to do it, I, I think we need to, to correct that. So thank you for the hard work, thank you for the double-checking, Mr. Padilla, and I think we’re ready to at least try to do this in a more straightforward way.
Well, let’s hope so. I believe we’re ready to vote. Open the roll, close the roll, that ought to streamline the process. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Sorry.
Okay?
Ten ayes.
All right, that’s approved. Which brings us to Item Thirty-Two. I think, Ms. Walters, you had called this special.
I’ll do it now.
Could you push the speaker button, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for Thirty-Two to be special for the purpose of voting no on exempting a position from the civil service ranks.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Item Thirty-Two is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right, that’s approved. Next item, I believe, is Item Thirty-Seven, called special by Ms. Chick. Ms. Chick, push the speaker button, please. Go ahead, yeah, go.
Colleagues, today’s motion asks for some very important and specific information from our Department of Water and Power to the full council. And my colleague, Mr. Padilla, is going to offer a friendly amendment that I think actually is an improvement to my original amendment. But the DWP has two responsibilities, and so does the City of Los Angeles and the city council, two responsibilities at this point in the energy crisis. One is to be a good citizen statewide in terms of allowing some of our energy that we don’t need to provide for our immediate needs to be shared, to be sold statewide. But the second responsibility is to protect our DWP ratepayers, the people that we represent. In order to do that, this motion is very much calling on the DWP to be the lead with and for us, to make sure that the state puts in place a very concrete guarantee, a letter of credit, or through other means, a guarantee that we are going to protect our ratepayers. And I define protecting the ratepayers in two ways. One is making sure that we get our money back, that we’re not going in debt by sharing our energy, and that our rates could go up or it could affect our general fund. So getting repaid and being reassured that we’re getting repaid is one part of protection. The other is sharing information, is educating the ratepayer, and is educating ourselves. And so the second part of the motion also asks for a report back, and I want to amend my own motion by adding that the updated information from DWP, and it will be the CLA and OARS, on the current status of our debt on, in this energy crisis, plans for repayment, impact on rates, impact on general fund, et cetera, that that information come back to the full council on, at our regular council meeting on April 20th. The motion is being sent to committee, but certainly that information is already available and should be sent back to us as quickly as possible. So the amendment is that the section about information on debt, money owed, how we’re getting it back, impact, come back to the full council directly or from committee, but by the meeting August, April 20th. Thank you very much.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
I’ll second it.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think what I have to say is certainly consistent and support Councilmember Chick’s argument, very much in favor of the motion. I have filed an amending motion, Thirty-Seven A, that would add also in the report back perspective from OARS and CLA, who are the folks who work for us. We know DWP does as well, but we need the advice and recommendations from our, our own chief legislative analyst as well as our administrative office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Council President Protem Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I hope that I can supply some of the information everyone is seeking today. It’s my understanding that the state has been paying us back on a regular basis, and that since the previous letter of credit expired, they’ve paid all their bills bi-weekly, and we have no real reason to expect that to change. I think that that’s something, first of all, everybody should feel reassured about, as, as I do. And as chair of the committee that oversees the Department of Water and Power, I do spend a fair amount of time talking to them about where we are with respect to this. I think it is important that the council wishes to be kept apprised, everybody should be kept apprised of what’s happening. My concern with Ms. Chick’s motion is a minor one. I think that it is important to collect this information. It is a very good idea for us to make it available, not only to the full council, but to the members of the public. And I want to tell you in a minute about a very nice letter I had from a young man in my district. I think it’s important for us in the city to carry out the, the kinds of exhortations that we make on other people. But my one concern here is that we, we run the risk, as we always do, being the City of Los Angeles, that if, the rest of Sacramento has a tendency to take umbrage at anything we do. They’re frequently unreasonable in their position, but they do it. And I, I would, I’m a little nervous about requiring a new letter of credit in view of the fact that they have continued to pay on a regular basis and they are up to date, only because of the potential for unnecessarily aggravating people we’re going to be going to for assistance on all kinds of city matters. The, it just costs them money to put up a letter of credit, and I’d rather have them pay us the money than put up the letter of credit. Outside of that, I’m in support of the rest of the motion, and I’m in support of Mr. Padilla’s amendment. We’ll be more than happy to receive reports in committee and also to bring them to the full council. But I do, I do really want to caution that we not, in, in our desire to do what we need to do to make sure the city is protected, we seem to have done it, is the point. I think the point’s been very effectively made, because they are continuing to pay on a regular basis and they are up to date. a regular basis and they are up to date.
Are you amending? Are you up to the question?
I'm making a comment. I may have something to say afterwards, but I, that's all I wanted to say at this point.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Well, I'm happy to hear that they have been paying us. However, I do share the concern of some others that I don't know how long that will last. They have been rapidly depleting the state surplus, and a lot of other programs that we've counted on for funding are going to suffer because of this. And until the energy crisis is alleviated by adequate permanent supply, there is a tendency, the fact is, when, eventually, they are not going to be able to rely upon these reserves and these surpluses they had in the budget anymore. So I, I'm going to listen to the sage advice of, of our Pro Tem and not insist upon a letter of credit this time, but I think that we need to be very careful, very cautious. And if they stop paying us, then immediately we should stop supplying the energy unless we get paid, because we do have that fiduciary responsibility. Let me just add one thing. You know, the Department of Water and Power are doing a good job, and they're getting a lot of credit now, Frank, but you were there, too, around the city before some of the current regime, when some of us went to, to Delta, Utah, and we went to Page, Arizona, and to Phoenix, and we entered into these agreements that got us a lot of criticism at the time, if you remember. And that's why, and I think Ruth was here at that time, too, and supported that, and I think Councilman Yaroslavsky and Councilman Ferraro. But these were things, these, these, this is the reason we have adequate power today, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't take it lightly, because the future, God knows, the legislature and the governor could enact emergency legislation, they could take away our power supply also and make it part of a common statewide source. We don't know what they can do. Obviously, we're trying to be a good neighbor, and we're trying to supply, help our neighbors with the surplus. But we need to be vigilant, and I think that's what Mrs. Chick's motion and Mr. Padilla's motions were intended for, and we respect that. But I'm going to listen to you, Ruth, and, but I'm going to expect, I think we're all going to expect you to let us know the moment the payments stop, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
I was just going to move the previous question.
There are two other council members that wish to speak, Mr. Pacheco, and so we will call a vote if, okay, pass, okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick for a second time.
Yeah, first of all, in a technicality, the CLA and ORS should be involved in making the report and giving their analysis to the full council as part of my amendment, where I'm asking for that on April 20th. And I believe that that might make it fine to receive and file Mr. Padilla's amendment because it's all incorporated then in mine. And that's a question, actually, rather than a statement. If it accomplishes what he intended, then we can do that. In terms of changing my motion, I didn't hear that that's what my colleague, Councilmember Galanter, did, and I would very strongly object to taking out the first I therefor. Since I am agreeing that we're not voting on that today, we're sending it to committee. But I certainly think we need to look at it and to have an in-depth discussion. And if there's a reason why we cannot get it, a letter of credit, or we shouldn't, then I'm interested in hearing that. Certainly, I want to maintain good relationships with the state, but colleagues, our state legislators that represent the same people we represent are representing DWP ratepayers. And I think they also look at the municipal entities, such as our DWP, our nonprofit entities, as being very deserving of being repaid, and that is how they're treating us now. But let's not forget, we have almost a $200 million debt, the part that I'm asking for a report on, that isn't being paid off. We're being paid off going forward, and that's a good thing and an appropriate thing. I would also like to point out, and this even connects to an earlier item, that when something goes into committee, it doesn't often, all of that information get brought in to be shared with all of us, and more importantly, with the public. And so I think it's very important that we have a discussion of both. What kind of guarantees and assurance do we have going forward? What about backwards? And what, if anything, can we or do we want to do about it? And two, a discussion of any unpaid debt, and what are the possibilities of getting repaid on it? It is the responsible and accountable way for us, the city council, to deal with this. And I do look to our colleague, the chair of that committee, to look at it in depth and bring it back to us for further discussion, with the requirement that the second piece is in on April 20th, with the involvement of the CLA and ORS on both. Thank you.
Is that with the valiant assistance of her vice chair, too?
The vice chair and the third member as well.
Thank you ever so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
The vice chair, the vice chair's white horse, there's a whole bunch of folks going to be involved in this. I actually rose just to see clarification as to where we stand. Here's, here's my question. I think I heard, Ms. Chick, you say, and I just want to confirm this, that there, the both components of, both moving clauses of your motion would go to committee to come back on April 20th. Is that correct? Okay, so we're voting today merely to have the reports, to have the content be directed to committee to come back? Fine.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes President Pro Tem Galanter for a second time.
All right, I, I just want to say to Ms. Chick, I think we're on side here. I don't, I don't think there's a dispute going on. It's just a question of how best to achieve what we need to achieve, which is the ongoing supply of electricity, not only in the City of Los Angeles, but throughout the state, and the continued protection of our ratepayers. And so far, the messages that we have sent to Sacramento have actually worked quite well. I was told after, you'll remember that the, I believe that was the mayor who proposed one day that we stopped selling electricity, and I'm told hysteria broke out in Sacramento. People were lining up with baseball bats to go after the LA legislators. Jackie Goldberg said that the council's resolution, which we passed the following day, declaring our intention to continue as a good neighbor, was extremely helpful as a document to be handed around. We, we really do have to remember that we have to do our job and they have to do their job, and sometimes those things overlap, and sometimes they get a little touchy. And so my only concern here is that we, I'm in complete agreement that we need to have all the information that we can possibly have, that we need to make it public, share it with the public. Let me just tell you the story about this young man in my district who wrote a letter and told me all the things his family is doing to conserve. And let me tell you, if everybody were doing that, the state would be in a much better shape. They, all, all the kids do their homework in the same room, so the lights are out in the other rooms, and they, they turn off the dishwasher for the dry cycle so they don't have to, and they do all kinds of stuff. They changed all the light bulbs. They're really doing their job. This young man wanted to know, therefore, if we're doing our job, why are those colored pillars at LAX still lit up? So I've sent his letter to the Board of Airport Commissioners, and I want to see what they have to say. Point is, people are taking this crisis seriously. And, and the airplanes, yeah. No, no, it's the, it's the circle of bright, you know that, that thing with the pillars that they have at Danfins? You want to see those pillars? Well, not if the rest of the state is dark. Anyway, the point is that we just need to be sure that we are working as colleagues with our representatives in Sacramento. So I think if we send all this to committee, we'll get the reports back, everything will be cool.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Padilla, Councilwoman Chick had mentioned whether or not you felt it was appropriate to receive and file your portion of this motion.
Rudy, just send the whole thing to committee. Send Mr. Padilla's amendment as well. When it comes back, it's going to come in one report, so it's, you want a ribbon? We'll give you a ribbon. And it, the, the questions and the answers are going to be the same, whether it's Ms. Chick's amendment or Mr. Padilla's amendment. So just send the whole package.
What a dandy idea. Let's send this whole item 37 to the Commerce Committee for consideration. Okay? Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for public comment from non, on non-agenda items.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members, the Motion Picture Industry Barometer, measuring production, is about to hit a new threshold as the Writers Union contract with management expires May 2nd. The storm clouds that began gathering last summer are about to become a tornado. The high-quality filmmaking like that Humphrey Bogart was a part of can return to Hollywood if you act. Support the Screen Actors Guild, SAG, after the American Federation of Television and Radio Actors. And the Screen, the Screenwriters Guild contract, which expires May 2nd, is arch, is in need of reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Are there any other cards for public comment? I don't believe there are. At this time, colleagues, we are going to be recessing into executive session. So sergeants, would you please help us prepare the council chambers for executive session? We will be back. Those persons in the audience not involved with the closed session, if you could please excuse yourselves.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk?
Yeah, why don't we do that as we're clearing the room?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, those items are posted and referred.
There are our sole excuses on the desk. Councilmember Walters requests to be excused for city business May 6, 15, 16, 18, 22, 23, and 25. A motion is required on the 18th and 22, 23, and 25th.
Mr. Padilla moves on the ones that need a motion. Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Walters also requests to be excused for city business April 25th to leave at 11:30. That meets council policy.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused Wednesday, April 25th. City business, a motion is required.
Mr. Fuhr moves. Without objection, so ordered.
That clears the desk.
Very good. We'll now go into closed session. We'll be back.
We seem to have lost a quorum, and consequently, the council is no longer officially in session. And we did want to let the public, we found him. Well, now we're in open session. So can we, can, let's do the ones, no, let's do the ones that, that need to be done in open session. Okay? So let's, let's do the items from closed session that need to be adopted in open session.
Item 42A is a settlement in case of rates versus City of LA, and it's in the amount of $400,000.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next one.
42C, excuse me, 42D is a settlement in the amount of $134,000, and that's in the case of Jackson versus City.
Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that's approved. We had, I think, two more.
42E is settlement in the case of Franco versus Leal et al., and that's in the amount of $585,000.
Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved.
And that clears the desk.
All right, forthwith on all of those last three. Gail, are we okay on the, we can take, carry over the rest of the closed session items? All right. Oh, okay, fine, then, good, all right. So we have cleared the desk, I believe, so will everybody please rise for adjourning motions? And who has an adjourning motion? Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the council today to adjourn in memory of Emily Reynolds. I'm told that Ms. Reynolds was a very kind and affectionate woman that lived her whole life in Louisiana and who passed away at the age of 99. She is the mother of Mary Clark, a resident of the 9th Council District, and the block club captain for the 51st and 52nd Street Block Club, very active in all of the things going on in CD9. Ms. Reynolds is survived by her daughter, Mary Clark, two sisters, Mary Ellen Spencer and Carrie Ferguson, and a host of nieces and nephews.
Anybody else? Call the roll. And now we are officially adjourned. See you on Friday.